Six o'clock, we'll call meeting in order. First order of business is the pledge of flag. We're gonna mix it up today. We're gonna dive right into the presentation for the financial update from that.
Yeah, so we kind of talked about before. I did have some better news this time than the last time that we met. So happy to kind of talk about that. What I figured I'd do is kind of give you guys an overview of the markets, the economy. Then kind of dive in for new members, give you kind of an idea of how the account is set up, how we're managing that, that sort of thing. And certainly talk about the performance last couple of years. Certainly, if you guys have any questions as I'm going through this, you'll be interrupting me. You know, definitely can be, yeah, go back and forth with this. So. Like I said, last year, much, much better here for more markets in the economy. And much better than most predicted kind of coming into twenty twenty-three. If you think back to like end of two, early twenty-three, most, sorry. Uh, so kind of coming into twenty-three, most analysts predicted some sort of recession at some point last year. We didn't miss that. So that in combination with inflation going down through the year, getting closer to the Federal Reserve's two percent target is what they're looking for. We think at some point through this year, we get pretty close to that, um, that target and kind of going back to twenty twenty-two. The biggest issue of twenty-two was how quickly interest rates went up, how quickly the Federal Reserve raised those rates. And the main reason for that was trying to bring down inflation. So in our minds, they were probably a little bit too late to do that, but they did it. They, in our mind, pretty much succeeded with that. You know, we're getting down to those levels that they feel comfortable in the long term. So, you know, that's all good things kind of going forward is all of that inflation is behind us. Interest rates at some point this year should start to take down. Which long-term for stocks is good thing. For, you know, money market funds, that sort of thing, not necessarily as good of a thing. But all in all, still kind of puts us in a positive, positive light there. So that on top with, you know, the labor market's still very strong. There's still a lot of good things going on in the economy. So. It's always easy to kind of pick and choose different data points to kind of fit your argument, whether positive or negative. So there are some negative aspects going on there. But I'd argue that, you know, we really have those in any sort of market condition. You can always point to a couple of different data points that don't necessarily fit an optimistic view. But long-term, you know that typically stocks grow over time, bonds pay decent interest rates. And as long as they're high-quality bonds, they'll pay those rates for hopefully quite a few years. So, you know, kind of looking into this year, we did avoid the recession last year. That doesn't mean that we're out of it yet. Uh, I do still think we can see some kind of recession. It would be pretty mild, so I don't think it's gonna be. You know, certainly anything like a two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So, you know, with that, plus everything going on in the world, there are some increased risks to that recession outlook for this year. But again, you know, I think all in all, it does end up being relatively mild, if it loses something like that. So that's kind of wrong on the market economy point of view specifically than the US portion of that. So for new members. We took over this account late in twenty-one, I think it was like October, so I meant. So, timing-wise, in the last five to ten years, probably couldn't have been any worse any time to do that. Fast forward twenty twenty-two, interest rates skyrocketed. This sort of portfolio is set up in what we consider kind of a moderately conservative strategy. So if you've been on a scale of one to ten, ten being the most aggressive, one being the most conservative, it's probably three or four. So nothing crazy by means. And with that, um, the largest portion of investments within the account is fixed income bonds. Things like corporate bonds, government bonds, treasuries, you know, CDs to a certain extent for all of them. So in twenty twenty-two, those got absolutely hammered. So they had the worst year that they've ever had, which I can't say very often. Usually we can kind of point to some year of something similar happening. But we truly have never seen interest rates still up as soon as they did. So for the year in twenty-two, bonds were down sixteen to seventeen percent when typically they're down two or three percent at their worst. So. Timing-wise, we were in a really bad spot with that. So again, from the fixed income portion, again, it's primarily corporate government municipal bonds. We do tend to focus on higher quality bonds. You can get higher interest rates from lower quality bonds, but we don't think it's worth. You know, kind of taking on that risk, especially at this point. You know, we think kind of being higher in credit makes a lot of sense. So that's kind of the nature of the fixed income portion. So again, that historically and going forward is going to be right around seventy percent of the portfolio. So that balance, the thirty percent, is going to be in more stock-based investments. So of that thirty percent, about twenty of that is going to be in US markets. Uh, rather twenty-three percent of that's going to be primarily US markets, um, very diversified. So lots of different companies, size, strength, areas of. Expertise, things like that. So technology to what we call consumer staples. So things like toilet paper, towels, everything. So the idea is we really want to kind of spread out the risk as much as we can, especially now with stocks. So that's kind of how the account has been set up historically. I still think that makes sense going forward. You know, I don't think we want to make any drastic changes to that at this point. I think long-term, that's a good place to be right now. So, you know, part of our process is on a quarterly basis, we go through and we're looking to see are those seventy, thirty splits still where they should. So last year's a great example of markets did very, very well for a good part of the year. And that got to a point where the stock started to make up about thirty-five, thirty-six percent of the portfolio. So. Again, part of our regular process is we go in, we sell back down to that thirty percent, buy more bonds, usually at a lower price. And then get back to that seventy, thirty split that we're kind of used to there. So those are just kind of some of the moves that we made through the year. Um, this first page, you can kind of see the breakdown of all the individual investments in that. So. Basically, what we do is we, we look at different areas of the market and find different investments that make sense for that particular area. So. You can see here, there's a lot of different categories. Um, most of these individual investments then make up. Anywhere from two to three thousand individual holdings within each of those. So if you look down kind of through the whole towns account, there can be twenty to twenty-five thousand individual holdings within the accounts. So very, very spread out for the reasons that we talked about before. You know, again, just being very diversified, um, trying to spread out that risk just as much as we can. So, kind of going into what the performance looks like. So again, last year was a very nice bounce back. Um, so the account was up about eight and a half percent, eight point three percent for the year. So that was a gaining of about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. So how that kind of compares to other areas of the market, um, the US markets were up anywhere from twenty to forty percent on the asset side. Most of the fixed income markets were up about five percent for the year. So, you know, thinking back to kind of how that split was. Again, we don't expect to be up twenty-six percent. Conversely, in twenty-two, when the market was down thirty-eight percent, you were down eleven percent again. So. Again, we want to kind of be on the upside on both of those. So when markets are down, we want to be benefiting, you know, losing quite a bit less in the market. We certainly did that in twenty-two. And then on the flip side, we're essentially going to be gaining less in those up markets as well. So again, I think, you know, we're still two or just like four, we're still a little bit below where that two point five initial investment was. So about sixty-five grand below as of today. The other thing too is it's hard, especially with twenty twenty-two being such a unique year. So. Never in history did we had bonds and stocks go down double digits in the same year. Even in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that didn't happen. So in oh eight, oh nine, bonds were down about three and a half percent. So, you know, looking over the course of that time, we really had a one in fifteen-year event in twenty twenty-two. So we dug ourselves in quite a way. You know, there's no question about that. So. The hardest part about that is it came in, it was, I think, late October. Um, even if money had been invested, say, six months before that. Would be above that too. So it's purely a timing factor. Because the market's sending two thousand twenty-one, we're positive for that. So again, I think big picture wise, the allegations to me still make a lot of sense. I don't see any big changes there. And we're keeping an eye on all the individual investments on a daily basis. Most of our clients have similar components within a lot of their accounts. So we're able to track that very easily. And then again, we've processed you going in, you know, rebalancing those accounts on that quarterly basis and keeping up with it that way. You know, we can pass some very good practice long-term for it. And kind of looking, again, we're looking at this for the next five, ten, fifteen years. So we certainly don't want to get caught up in the relatively short, call it two and a half year period. You know, again, once you look out ten, fifteen years from now. I don't think we're really going to remember twenty twenty-one, twenty-two before that. So. You know, I think my biggest, my biggest thing is going forward, you just continue to be patient with it. You know, it's one of those things where typically a year like twenty-two. You're not going to recover anything a year after. I think we've done very well to get to this point where we are. Um, but it's also not realistic to think whatever's lost in a year that you made back in the year. I usually use the analogy of the market usually falls down the elevator shaft, and then you have to walk up the stairs to get back to where you were. And it's clearly the time component of it. So those bad market years tend to be more than that. The good market years tend to be longer. But again, it takes a longer time to get back to that level period. So I think kind of, you know, going forward, just continue to be patient with it. I do think there's going to be some increased volatility this year. You know, we had a pretty quiet year last year, relatively speaking. So I do think that changes to a certain extent. So I think that's all the more reason for us just to be more, you know, higher quality investment, um, more selective with what we're buying, things like that, you know, just with. More, more focused on fundamentals of what we're buying, uh, just making sure that we're staying on top of that going forward. Do you have any?
No, we already had to point by, I mean, we had crap here.
I wish.
Uh, Rick, do you have any?
I don't.
No, man, I don't either. So thank you for coming in. You have a, yeah, his diligence and monitoring our money.
Sounds good.
Okay, uh, members' reports. We will start with a review of events.
All votes approved.
Second, any further discussion on those? See none, or those in favor?
Interception. Best way to turn and go straight through. Is there a plan and then maybe an hole in motivation, a sign of some sort of going, if you've got markings on the road, aren't there? An accident this weekend that is there that I didn't go to, so I saw you. There's no markings, there's no sign, you know, either an overhead sign at the light or one on the side, on the sidewalk that's on a post that just delineates. Left lane is straight through, right lane is that turn. If that is, it's supposed to be that way.
Yeah.
Right. If it's fine is there or had been, then that may be a stake in it. But just something, if, if there's not a plan for that going forward, then we should. About one to lose.
Yeah.
There was a heated discussion amongst the two parties involved, which, and when they say who's it all, we said, we just put down the facts on the car, that's all we do, we don't find fault. But we have the document, there's no sign that delineates the two, and there's no marking in the level. It's visible anymore, they can see the same. There's, that is two lanes there. So just that. Uh, the other thing, I've had questions about FEMA trailer in Scotty again, that's part of the resap center, people wondering what they need to do. I. Turned into the news and I'm sure most of the websites, the news websites could say, voted it. It's one of the December eighteenth. Storm. Where, if you guys have details, like I don't, as far as people go to try to recoup.
I wouldn't be unaware of this until we saw it in the press last.
So it's been on the news at least two nights. Uh, the FEMA trailer was there and I believe what it is, people can go over. And if they've had losses from that storm on the eighteenth. They can file with FEMA and from what I understand. From a phone call I did this morning, they're trying to help people as fast as they can with cutting checks for people that have had losses. So anybody listening, I mean, we can put it on if we figure out the details of what it is, send people that way to try to take care of any. Issues they may have had or losses they may have had from the storm. Those things you could say.
Good. Nice. I'm Norwood. All right, Tom, and so I have quite a bit because you've given me an extra week, uh, between meetings. So let's start off with, uh, Gerard Sierra North on Sprint that was concerned that came before the board. I think it was outside of regular session, just by way of side comment, because there was a declaration maybe of poor taste. He came right in within the next two days after I called him and has submitted another apology to the town. That is attached to my report there. It's pretty simple, uh, but well thought. Uh, the town report is now in the printers, should be ready the weekend of the twentieth. Bridge newsletter, that's out, that's just the town meeting one. Uh, this board was the only one that was responsive to the request. Now, in part, uh, no other folks running for office of any other offices responded. The process of upgrading this building to fiber internet from just our regular high speed, that's, uh, started. Be a couple of months before we get there, we're going to get the added speed and it's a break even, if not a couple of dollars off a month. Absentee ballots are available from both March fourth and fifth. Uh, those reminder notices that you saw maybe a month ago, though we can start hitting mailboxes this weekend. It's got a QR code, it's got a bitly link, um, and so we'll see how that is on us. I'm very, very surprised with the low numbers on absentees. Even with, you know, the choices on the ballot being as limited as they are for both of the races, uh, so we'll see. Uh, Canadian Behavioral Health sent a thank you note for that six hundred dollars that you cut at the end of twenty twenty-three. The penalty discussion with Department of Labor, that went seemingly well. Unfortunately, the folks I met with said that the director, um, is kind of a hard nose. And doesn't really like to negotiate. He feels that it's already been reduced enough. Uh, but we will see. One of the things that I took with us was, we had a number of things at fire department. Well, now we have the administrator. And so that is a very costly thing, even though one meeting in the net of our budget, it wasn't. Uh, but that was very important to see that we were highly in that position. That made benefits, uh, in terms of numbing some of those penalties down. So we'll see. Uh, the Monday before your next meeting is President's Day, so we'll be closed here. The RFP for Brac Stone Repair and Reconstruction for Riverview Cemetery, that's up on Main Street, that closes on the fourteenth of February. No submissions to pay, no surprise there. Planning board meeting, that was supposed to be next, it was supposed to be tomorrow and then it was next Thursday. Uh, we did that as a favor to a potential commercial investor here in town. He was supposed to give you stuff for the end of the day today, so that didn't happen. So he'll go before planning board in March if that comes together. Uh, a lot, a lot, a lot of positive feedback coming in from the parking ride on Martin's Dream Road and the backside of Henry Town Square. Naturally, there's been quite a bit of money invested. I think, but grant assistance there. On Sunday afternoon, I had somebody report twelve trailers parked, Sunday afternoon, people supposed to be going home. Twelve trailers parked in the lot on Martin's Dream Road and eleven slabs were jammed into the backside of that town square. So. Um, we're, we're doing what we were hoping to be doing there. Uh, I signed a letter of intent to join the Community Resilience Partnership through the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and Future. Uh, this is a softie initiative relative to climate. Um, but there are opportunities that we can capitalize on here as a community, uh, without having to install EV charging stations in the parking lots that are going to be compared to electricity, things like that. Uh, it does allow for things like solar panels. So I'm going to explore that and then once we get along, uh, and I mean, really, the one that we've got the clearest and cleanest, I think, is the fire department. Then with the section of this room, it may be the airport terminal building, the explosive that they've got out there, but they're a really fun move line, and I'm not sure what the cost is going to be associated with that. But. Uh, if nothing else, we'll be able to get somebody in here to take a look at it, uh, with the assistance of a consultant now to my office, which is great.
The airport couldn't because they were on Madison.
We, they can't have a, or they can't have an array. Because they would be generating too much. If we had someone on a building out there, we would be able to consume all that electricity ourselves. So we'd just be stored right there. Fifth committee will meet on the twenty-seventh of February. They're moving along with the revolving loan fund proposal. Um, they had a very thorough presentation, and so the next meeting, they're hoping to kind of move forward with that, try to develop some guidelines for, um, the program. And then kick it back over to you folks, gave your thoughts on it. Right now, it kind of looks like they would ask Somerset Economic Development Corporation, uh, Scotty, and manage that. Um, it, it arguably small numbers compared to other funds that they manage, but right now the number was a hundred thousand is what they were looking at and still a lot of stuff to play on. But. That'll be the topic in the next meeting. February fourth was the automatic foreclosure date for real estate taxes twenty twenty-one. Four properties were foreclosed on. I've already had one owner come in and pay completely the last three years. Uh, plus interest through four one. So that's done, uh, and I'll ask you to sign that later. The reimbursement that we got from the state for the tax stabilization program, that was a sixty-five and over program that kept your taxes at the same level as the year before. We knew that was going to be underfunded. They told us it wasn't going to be. It was underfunded by forty-four percent. So we only received fifty percent, fifty-six percent of our lost revenue. Uh, it's not guaranteed that we're going to get the balance. That's seventy-six hundred dollars for us, but there is legislation pending. Uh, and it seems as though there should be bipartisan support to fund the balance. Uh, but it's a matter of where it's going to come from, whether it comes from additional taxation or it can both bring you day funds. So we'll see how that goes. Summer notices, thirty-day notices, that's, you know, initial. Um, start of delinquency. Uh, those are going to go mid-month to year-old, uh, unpaid sue use charges. Library trustees, they're meeting a week early. Um, so that'll be tomorrow, three thirty. That is in large part for a book sale. They're going to hold the two-day book sale at the gym. In contrast with the election, hope to raise some funds for the library through, uh, discarded books. Uh, the mass messaging system through Civic Plus, we had the initial meeting, um, two weeks ago, I would say, yesterday, we had a follow-up call. Everything goes as planned, we're back public platform is going to drop next Friday. Um, and so we have purchased, uh, two generation old iPad and keyboard. We're going to leave right here at the front counter. So when somebody's here, they can sign up. Uh, if not, then we can do it with somebody that might not have it. They can use cell phones. We have the ability to ring home phones. Uh, send emails. Uh, it's, it's amazing what it is. Me, he said to me, she said, I can't believe that this didn't, like something that people tried to hack. It's pretty powerful. Um, and I think that with the choices that we're even need to sign up in terms of the categories. Uh, it will be beneficial, whether it's wreck, parks, emergency, just regular operations, public works, road work, traffic, things like that, fire. Uh, permanent, non-emergency fire, we're going to include a Mercer fire, so Mercer residents can sign up to get Mercy specific things. Um, so it's all, we're really good. And one of the things we did do was we also reserved. We went over, but we probably got fifty or sixty key words, texts, like save for usulade, you want to pay some usulade text frog to the six-digit number, right? And it'll automatically enroll you in usulade style. But one common pool of words for this service as it stands today. So I'm like, hmm, we're going to get everything. So we have all the seasons, all the holidays and all the funny things like that. It will be able to roll out for the definition, trying to get people enrolled in it. So anyway, uh, it was, it was really, really impressive and so we'll be curious to see how that all rolls out. Hopefully, next Friday or following, we will really start to push that and get people to sign up. So. Um, there is an app and I just really asked them to not advertise that. The app is not really what we're looking for in terms of how people get their information. It's great if you're traveling, you want to be catching the emergency area, but they can do that through self-communication. So. Uh, for what we're looking for, we just want folks to sign up those text messages or live calls. Um, let's see. The fire station, we're converting them from spectrum to TDS fiber. They're going to save seven bucks a month. So they've got a phone line coming in, they've got internet coming in, the cables coming in free. TDS is able to bundle their existing phone with the internet service and that's going to save seventy bucks. They were pretty impressed with that. And they're just, they just didn't want to go voice over internet for telephone, obvious reasons. And so they've said that that was fine and they're going to be able to do that. So they're going to be converting at the same time we do. And then naturally the disaster, uh, the December eighteen storm was declared a disaster by the federal government. That's going to allow us to seek reimbursement for our expenses. Uh, which, you know, I've been accumulating, but, um, we will seek that through the state process that's you upwards of a year before we get that. Public works, road posters have started to appear, um, not that you can't travel on these roads, but if the roads are soft and the roads are wet, you can't travel on the roads. The road committee had strongly advised us to start getting roads like Big Little Hill two or three weeks ago. Uh, we didn't, um, but we're, we've hit everything at this point in time, fifty degrees weather, even those, yeah, were pretty as a dog. So. Um, we, it's not perfect, but this is honestly the time we did it two years ago and it's one week earlier than when we did it last year. So. Uh, it's not, yeah, it's getting earlier and earlier. First week of February is when the posters started to lock in. And I just, you know, I, when I get folks, it's just like, if the road frozen, then you'll, but if not. You're ruining your own road, you're going to end up paying for it, right? So it just doesn't make sense with the amount of money that we're putting into it not to be preventative. And I think by the time this Saturday come around, we're going to have a mess. Yeah. So. Uh, the request for proposals on Long as Ebro Stream Crossing, those will close the sixteen, so we may or may not be able to consider that a chance meeting. Derrigo Engineering, who was handling the Sandy River project and Haley Ward, who's handling the Five Wall Road project. Uh, we had a meeting last week to discuss combining those projects to achieve economies of scale. We're pretty confident that we can get it. They're going to work through some blending documents and specifications to get it quote bid. Uh, Derrigo is going to oversee that blending. Uh, and. Then the inspection will be done by the respective firm who have designed it. So we should be in a pretty good place there. And then also Haley Ward. Um, has been out to take a look at Wild River and possibly shift it now over the side. Uh, the goal is to get that done this summer. Uh, what about working on is still up in the air, but. That's the boat we were at. The only other thing that I didn't think about to put in there is some preliminary, but I had extended an offer to a vote enforcement officer. And if that offer, uh, finalizes through, I'm hoping to have them on right after the President's Day holiday. So that's, uh, no certifications, local resident, uh, background in building, construction, um, and I think it would be good that, so. The training process, but I moved that some. Do you know if we'll get a chance to see what they've got designed, uh, for the rebuild on Father Walls and Sandy River? Uh, yeah, I'm going to have plans. The bottom round was almost identical, about the fourth, we cut the trees back, the poles we saw out and rip wrap in, we ran what they say, and we've got. Uh, it's going to, it's almost identical to what it was. So it's, it's staying essentially the way it is. That's correct. Uh, we're going to duplicate what was further down. Let's just run it up the next section. The Five Wall Road is gave you the baskets. So there's the cut, the slope of it, it's, you know, the cages with rocks and there's plants on top of those. And then we just, uh, just see the engineer was looking at it again, maybe the day she says that, we've got to ease that slope up. So they're going to, they're going to cut the slope a little bit more to give it a little bit more of an angle that we kind of exposed to the steepness, but. That was what we were looking about, pines and things like that. Yeah, I ordered that. Initially, there was all kinds of creative stuff going around. He's right. So the engineering bill has been pined and it could have been if we had gone right straight here, but we thought that we weren't going to be able to do anything aside from, you know, really going back. So. Anyway, but I have those, you know, all her electronics, so.
Uh, okay, uh, well, moving forward here, uh, discussion action on February seventh, January eighth, number two. Set the warrant for one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars. Sixty-five dollars.
Motion is, any further discussion on that? Seeing, uh, my only is, uh, an app loose is that. At the prior payment on the maintenance, uh, the maintenance building, but it's also a majority of the. Book ops for two and five, but this last week, and they have strapped in trees, so in case you can have, I wanted them spread, they're not going in. Good, good, yeah, I was feeling uncommon, I did. I, you know, this guy, seeing that all in favor, and that's everything.
Public comment?
Sure. You know, okay, roll on. Okay, uh, so public hearing on proposed amendments, uh, to the town of Nordwalk Sewer Use Ordinance. So really, ultimately, public hearing, yes. So, yeah, you don't have anything in your packet. I'll just, for the sake of online, say that this is. Relatively administrative amendment to the ordinance where. There are some miscellaneous edits from Board of Sewer Commissioners, Sewer Commission, Board of Slum and Select Board, other columns and things like that. But then we're also looking to take the terms of the sewer commissioners and convert them to stagger three-year terms instead of three, three, two, two, one. That was really the aim just behind it, was to get all of those terms to three-year terms. And that's it. If anyone has any questions, they can reach out to our office with the copies of it, the markup of it here in the town office and online. Okay, that being said, we will close the public hearing. Okay. Uh, moving forward, uh, discussion action on appropriation of grant funds. This is the twenty thousand dollars that we received from Somerset County, uh, last week related to December eighteenth and nineteenth storm. We voted to accept the funds at the last meeting and asked. We voted to accept the funds at the last meeting and asked it to be scheduled, uh, for appropriation this meeting. I also forwarded everybody the claims, uh, by email that had been there to be through the two oh one file.
Excellent. Uh, did everybody get a chance to browse through those? You didn't have to. You did. Great. You didn't. That's fine. I was able to, um. It's tough, right? Uh, in, in looking, I certainly saw some that warranted, uh, receiving funds, right? Uh, and others that you could say didn't, but that's a hard thing to say, all right? I can't, uh. Fault you for having insurance and then say, oh, I feel for you because you didn't. Uh, so that way it was tough. Really, it really got toxic and I, I keep, I don't know if it was Lindsay or something else that was saying, you know, it's really, it gets slipped. Uh, so for me, uh, I did kind of land at the best way to. It's not the best way. I, I guess the, the fairest, uh, or the most justifiable way for me. Uh, is to use this money for the emergency management. So, uh, just. Cause I think it equally helps everybody and we do need these items and it just puts us in a better position should this happen again. Not, not to take away from, uh, you know, it seems surreal, right? But, uh, you know, it's such a small amount, whether it's three hundred dollars or it seems small to us, right? Uh, but to other people, I, I, I see that there is a. Real impact or real hurt, I guess, to the loss they had felt, but I can't. Justifiably divvy out those funds affecting, but I, I just, I can't, I, I couldn't find a way. So for me, I, I landed it going back to emergency management. So. And I don't know how everybody else felt about it.
So I did do a follow up call with some of the folks at. Uh, the county's management, uh, emergency management. That was for the county. To giving up to the towns for this. It's not for individual. It's for us to do what we want to do with it, for those types of. The trailer that's over there is for them to go personally to put it in for those losses to try to recoup some of that. This email that's attached here originally from Tim Curtis, who's the county administrator, does. Kind of spell things out a little bit more. Um, are any of those other people, then they get known to them. There were some that was just like some fuel for January. That would possibly be covered on their, um, general assistance. Would that, would that be accurate if they, they had those, any of those people tried to communicate, like any of that or even ask for that? No, um. And hopefully do we have a way to just put it out to them that that trailer is over in Norwich Walk for them to go over. To put it, because that's for those first ones, I can tell you, we brought it up that last one is. When they took those claims in, it wasn't necessarily for this money. That's just how. Figure out how much it would be to each town. Uh, so I kind of.
For the trailers for immediate needs?
So, so if you had a loss, the way I understood the thing they knew is if you had any types of losses from this, you can go over any of those people. Fill out your application or whatever it is that you need to fill out. Uh, if you say, well, I lost this and it's not covered under my insurance, they're going to process those claims. I. Who knows how they adjust that or make the claim and pay you out. Uh, but the phone hall I had this morning is they are trying to cut those checks as fast as they can out of that money. Uh, so all these people that applied for this should be going for that. When they put those applications in, it was just. That's how the town got the money that they got is based off the applications we're putting in. Didn't mean it was to go to them in the way I understood them. Phone hall in this. You know, we don't think it's included. So I kind of didn't have to put that money in there. Um, if those people, if they can help those people through general assistance, if they come in. And there's nothing, would there be anything that would say, you know, that they did, you know, in immediate means. Could any of that money be moved from that account to general assistance we had? Ultimately, at the end of the day.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we have more than enough in general assistance to cover anything that was needed and anyone who did qualify. We certainly could make funds available. So I don't, right. See that being an issue with that. Hopefully it's a viable option for anybody that is feeling real hardship. So that's actually the idea. Yeah, I think that has a little clarity or.
Cause I was.
I need to feel a little better.
Yeah, right. At first it's, I don't know, everyone's because it was. What was that when they applied? Was it for them that they were expecting that money, but. Move the. Thinking that I did it and it wasn't necessarily as individual purposes. So that's how they base what the town was.
I'm like not super in favor and running it in the EMA account. Um, I do see it outlined here in Tim's letter. I don't recall that being a part of whether it letter before though. And what I'm coming up on is that. Like it might take some months for FEMA, FEMA to get them some funds. It even says like, if they don't qualify for general assistance to be able to support them. But to me, it's just like screaming, like immediate aids in the town for anyone who might need it with so many things. I do feel like it definitely muddied the water, uh, last time we met, I was like so closely tying it to the claims that remain to FEMA. Um, I do think it was just kind of a tool they used to figure out how much each town was going to need. Um, I don't know, this option, don't love the idea of putting it in the emergency. Management account. I don't know how much access we have to it to like meet anyone and move it like. Vehicle owners. Hotels, things like that. Uh, and what sort of access for putting out, it's like community members that we have a little bit of funding with these things like that. Um, that's kind of where they're asking.
All right, well, isn't there a question? Uh. Do we have anything out there either on our webpage or Facebook or whatever we have? Uh. It's asking if there are unmet needs or, you know, uh.
Or have.
It's tough. Are there resources available? Yeah, right. I, I hate that someone wasn't, you know, able to get somewhere because their car didn't work because of this. You know, yeah, I never didn't have food and whatnot. Uh. Certainly think we have funds, not just these funds, but other ones for all the things you mentioned. I just. I don't know about the access. Uh, for people to inquire, right? Uh, it's either calling to you or I mean, there's nothing really on our. Facebook or anything like that that allows them.
Well, we had, we use Facebook to push up the two oh one information post file. A hundred people ended up filing that because of that communication method, but. Um, I mean, I hadn't heard of anybody that. Were, was pushed out of their home that needed help in the town. We had one family, an elderly couple that. Would evacuated, came to the firehouse for four or five hours. And they had heard of, felt like, I mean, hitting meals prep. Yes, and I have retired chief's wife who come to meals and everything. And then they didn't want accommodations. They wanted to go this.
Yes, right.
I mean, those are the kind of difficult things where if they had a hotel room or something, we would have paid for that. Uh, or the Red Cross would have paid for that. And then I get all that money back through FEMA. So, I mean, candidly, we take this and it. You give it to individuals that don't have insurance, they're going to be made whole by FEMA if they apply for it. They make you file for insurance part. If you have it, if you don't have insurance, then you don't have to file and again. I thought, I mean, that's, it's, it's the immediate need and, and immediate, and I think this was. In this guy, but this was completely political. This twenty thousand dollars coming to the town is the administration thing. Somerset being political because it came from later. You wanted to come and check the twenty five dollars over the emergency commissioners meeting. And send me twenty five dollars the day or day after, uh, so that we can address some of these needs. So we could. Brand stuff up for the shelter or anything like that. And that's not what it was. So the only our security is later. Said, yeah, eight, fair enough. A while later.
As soon as, Jesus.
Almost, yeah. It's six, but you know, and we're determining if people still have emergency needs. And I don't think that that exists in large team of folks that lost their truck on Sandy River Road. They got themselves a brand new truck and. And their motor and all.
Well, I, I know, I saw a GoFundMe. I don't. I didn't pay too much attention about the family it was. I don't know if their GoFundMe has been met. Um, I don't know if you know, saw that. So I think it's hard for us to say if there's still a need out there. I think there are probably a lot of people who are disconnected and. Don't feel comfortable asking for help always and know that. These kind of things like exist from the town. Again, that's just.
I, I think it's, it's, it's valid. I think really it comes down to how do we effectively. Put it out there or provide access for them to, you know, discreetly, if you will, uh, get in touch with Richard. Uh, cause I, I think that really is your, your only access, right? It is. Our phone dollar email to Richard expressing the need and then the board certainly would. Take care of anything regardless of what the pool of funds it needs to come from, whether it be. Food or vehicle or housing or whatever it is. I think this board is more than willing to accommodate.
Right. I guess just my personal budget. By putting that in an account like that, some sort kind of sets us up in the future if this were to happen again, you know, if that money's not immediate from the county. We've kind of got something there to address those immediate needs in the future as well. And that was kind of, when I got here, we didn't have this and I just made a note, I need to know this account, but. That account enables me to do what I need to do without them straying on the pocket accounts. So that we can have a shelter just like that.
Well, because we really, we didn't, and I don't want to say we jumped the gun. We didn't wait for the county. We didn't wait for anybody else to do anything. You weren't worth to walk. But they weren't doing it later. Oh, they weren't. And I, I, I think that's a luxury we have here is we're not worried about who's going to pay for it. Who, who's going to pay for that? We have that ability to, whether this account or somewhere else to make that happen.
But that somewhere else isn't always. Right. Legally to us. So this EMA account is, and so. Because we've been taking our FEMA proceeds and not offsetting our expenses, considering it's not a budget segment, even putting it in that account. So that we are able to do things when we need to be able to do things. But what we had over here was very normal expense.
Yeah.
Relative, but if we'd had forty people over there, we'd have had expenses. If we had a full turners with, if we hadn't had Fairfield, we were just North Rock, there wouldn't have been so much support from outside. Because they were looking at us like, you poor people, you're being nice and hopping on the neighbor town and you don't have any of your residents in the shelter. And at the end of the day, there's a trailer over there. So the people that do need it, you go there tomorrow. Right, and.
I think that's a different need than what this out is.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that sounds like it's more claims related, like.
It is. We've still got a way to publish it, put something out on Facebook or town page. If there are still immediate needs from the storm. Contact Richard right now. And, and, and we can still try to address those through this money, general assistance money, whatever money we're going to. So that they are submitting that and we're doing everything we need to do. We do like. Actions, everybody does accomplish anything I think we're trying to accomplish.
How Richard wants to point all that and put it out there for everyone. Um, I don't leave to you, sir.
Well, I mean, candidly, if, if people come in and apply for general assistance, either they're in urgent conditions or not. Right. So yes, yes, most people in this community. Despite statistics, don't qualify for general assistance. So they would have to disclose financials and then demonstrate the emergency situation. And that's the standard that I would have to pull in order for it to be approved. And then if somebody interfered with my decision, there may be a deal considered.
Right. And then outside of general assistant funds, if there is a need and they were to make you aware of it. Uh, we could then discuss it at that point, what need was, whether it's food and it was food covered stuff or so like this stuff. I don't. Not even with somebody's need, that's right.
Then we call the attorney and you can use some of this money to pay an attorney to explain why we're going to try to use public money to put.
Well, no, like we have, we have food. I mean, so if your need was food, we have access to food. That's not fun.
I do have, you know, I don't have funds for anything else unless you call my number program.
Right.
So we have to be very careful as to how we're framing this because there are a lot of things we can do. But just because there might be a need over here, that somebody says, well, it's attributed to this. I don't have money to be able to, you know, upgrade the electricals in these houses.
Right, right. I, I don't think that would be a, a, a need that we would try to fulfill.
But what if they didn't do insurance?
Right, that would go FEMA thing.
Can't do the FEMA thing if you don't have insurance. That's what I'm saying. It would go to FEMA for this would be, I. Need to upgrade the electrical. I didn't have power for four days and now I lost some food. Okay, let's get it.
Things like twenty grand was like, I get to put, I put. Gas in my generator. I like my thirty bucks back. The next claim is I lost my house, like a lot of outfits.
Claims at all. I forget about the claims. I don't think we needed to look at those. I think it was just a tool that was used to determine the need in Norwich Rock, the need in Scott Hegan, the need in Fairfield. And they use that to say, okay, there were this many claims in Norwich Rock. We'll give them this percentage of the fund. So you got twenty thousand and they're saying use it for home repairs, use it for housing costs, use it for repairs, food, personal items. Or you can put it in this EMA account. And I, I'm just saying, I want to get our residents access to this if they need it and tell them it's available. And make it available for them.
So outside, I understand what you're saying, but. You need some food, there's some food covered. If you need. Almost anything else, there's that FEMA trailer down there. I mean, you know what I'm saying? There's a lot of the.
Different. I don't think the FEMA trailer is going to put you on a hotel for a night. I don't think the FEMA trailer is gonna. Bring your car to the shop to like fix a brake or something. If I, I don't know what happens to your cars when they get flooded, but. I think the FEMA trailer is like, I lost this much. Propane when I had to run my generator for this long. Like, that's not an immediate need. That's like after the fact that then they're going to need. I think, but I could be wrong.
And once it's in the emergency management account, we're not able. To fulfill a need like that. Cause we, we could, we could, you could reallocate them from the pot. So, okay, we would have to track this twenty thousand separately. My, my caution is, is that if you've been six weeks without. Right, if there's still a hotel room, right, three weeks later. Due to the.
All, all general assistance would pay for housing if they follow up. I totally get what you're saying. I, I, I see what you're saying. I totally do. I, I don't want to make you feel this proud. I mean. I just, uh, well, I, I, I like the fact that after, right, talking about this, that if something did come to light. With this money in the emergency management account, we could still reallocate out of that account. For whatever the need be, whether it was lodging or a vehicle repair, now I guess dicey, but anyway, uh. Right, or fuel, you know, what, whatever that is, I, I. I like that, that we'd be able to do that. So for me, again, it makes me feel even more comfortable with it going into this account. That we are able to still. Fulfill a need if someone has it. And again, just back to getting it out there. So like you said, people know that we have these funds, uh. Is really how Richard formulates it all for a Facebook post or our. Right, we, right, that's what we have here. Facebook and our digital sign, right? I don't know how you put all that on digital sign, but some post is so impressive.
I am going to digress, not to do with, not to do with any principle of it on either side. But unless you're going to give me fifteen of the twenty thousand to administrate the program. Unless where you can find a volunteer committee. And develop an implication and do it because I mean, I had fourteen or fifty jobs already. And administering this, when I put a Facebook post out there, I'm going to have fifty applications on my desk. And I'm going to have to do the financials. I'm going to have to do much psych visit. I'm going to talk about what's in the need. Did you go to the Hampton Inn? Did you want to go to the Hampton Inn? Or did you go to the Hampton Inn because you had water and you had? All of those things, all the soft things. Did you go buy groceries that week? Did you need a limit? Did you go buy groceries that week?
It'd be, it'd be a now lead, not a, I bought groceries that week because I needed them. It'd be a, I currently have no food. I currently, you know what I mean?
The flood, right? Because that's what the twenty thousand dollars is for.
Um, I don't know. I'm saying maybe no one needs help anymore. I mean, well, nothing will make sense. I don't know. Apparently.
I just feel like we're, we're getting really wrapped up in this, like really in depth with. You were given twenty grand because of flood. It was six, it was six weeks ago. Like, what do we do with it? Put it in the thing. The next one, we'll have twenty grand on tap, right? Or we can use it for.
Can't they figure out what other towns are doing with their twenty thousand dollars in table?
So I guess I'll say in a minute. Okay, uh, motion second, uh, to table, which opens it up for discussion. Uh, tabling doesn't, uh, really impact anything. Just kick the can, if you will, right? Uh. We've already voted to accept it. So we've already accepted the funds, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we do have, uh, I'm not a huge fan of kicking the can, if you will, down the road, uh. Yeah, and I, for me, I, again, I, I am comfortable with it going into the emergency management account. Uh, and letting it. Be there and then. I don't.
So any vote and then.
Oh, yeah, we can, right. So we're just discussing right now, right? Uh, any further discussion on tabling? Oh, yeah, we can, right, so we're just discussing right now, right, uh, any further discussion on tabling? Seeing no further discussion, uh, we'll vote on that, so all in favor of tabling and those opposed? Okay, uh, so. Uh, so I would take, uh.
Put it in to the account.
Okay, emergency management account. There's a motion and a second, uh, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor and opposed? Uh, I, 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 again, I think we really got put in a, uh, really a crappy situation there, that, uh. Kind of unfair the way it was dumped with the labels and stuff that were put on it, uh, it's tough and I, I really.
The county administrator went to the commissioners. And said, we should be doing something to the town. So they did, they voted, they allocated based upon this call, and then they sent this email to me. Nice, are you serious? Seems like in this appropriation county funds. And if you do, then what are you gonna pay us for the ministry? Anyway, so then they sent this, when they sent the check, they sent us the bullet. Because I had sent it back and I'd also asked other towns what they were doing, so, um. I don't think they were really targeted, I don't think they were all so.
Kind of a first anyways, we kind of muddled through it.
Okay. Yes. Um, okay, uh, discussion action on appropriation of grant funds. Yeah, okay, now I'm almost there.
Tiff Committee met on the twenty third with a request from the Sportsman's Association to support matching funds for grants that they received. Uh, to add signage to the rail grid, uh, there is a poll that was in your packet. Um, electronic, I think, for hot coffee, pretty much what the Sportsman's Association did was they applied for community benefit matching grant in November through the county. That's Tiff funding at the county level, uh, and the idea was that they would install permanent signage, wayfinding services, support businesses, install kiosks. Uh, along the trail, uh, to direct folks in and out of town, it's, it's not just us, it would include a few signs and where certain. Madison and a few signs in Fairfield, largely online associated and service directed wayfinding. Um, but so they were able to secure, uh, I believe ten. From the county, they have to come up with twenty five hundred and the request from the town, yes, is seventy five hundred. The Tiff Committee demandlessly supported, uh, the recommendation of seventy five hundred dollars. That was brand funds.
Yeah, that was right now, right?
Motion to, uh, set the pool of seventy five hundred dollars for the North Rock.
There was a motion and a second, uh, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor and that's it. Uh, okay, uh, discussion action on donations.
Right, I have a single donation of new balance, it is to be allocated four thousand dollars to recreation. One thousand dollars to Lucidae's, the one thousand dollars, which is flow through to the North Rock community.
The motion and second, uh, any further discussion?
Do they solicit those or did they just do that?
They reach out twenty years, find out what the needs are, and obviously they look at rent more often than anything else, part of the community outdoor activity. And then they start with Lucidae's and then the program, they used to bring them up with shoes and bags and stuff. And with the foundation, fifty, the way that it is, they've just decided this is the best way for the community to be. And they add it on extra at the end, because they look at their budget.
Like them, uh, so any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, sir? Uh, that's okay, discussion action on tip appointments.
With Todd resigning as, uh, Pinnick resigning, having January one, they love to make so into the committee, uh, Linda Quinby, uh, who's recently retired. Uh, approached me about serving on the committee, I've always been taught an application, which you had in your packet. Um, that's the only one I haven't seen, I haven't ever promoted, they, not really familiar with this lady, you. When it is, it'd be to fill it, it's, I currently would expire April twenty sixth.
I made a motion to that.
Seeing none, all in favor.
One way or the other, so.
Okay, uh, discussion action on downtown pedestrian sidewalk upgrade project.
Okay, so bear with me. We've been working on this for two and a half or three years now, we have a grant, a bike and pedestrian grant in the state of Maine that's supporting this project. Uh, when we started out, we thought our ballpark commitment was gonna be a quarter million involved. Uh, as a part of that, we talked about sidewalks, we talked about expanded lighting up to the bank gear. Um, that plan has never changed, but the price heads.
To press the conduit?
Some of that, so, I had a meeting with, uh, the engineer, my project manager, sorry, from DOT last week. And he's like, I wanna make sure you guys still want to live with this, I'm like, well, it's out of my price range. Uh, I know it's a priority through the revitalization plan, I know that there's been Tiff funds committed. Uh, but when you start talking about a budget of two point six million dollars, uh, which he kind of thought a little high. With a contingency that was high, um. You know, we're still looking at five hundred and thirty thousand dollars would be out of local share, the twenty percent of this project. So I said, well, our sidewalks have to be done, you're telling us that they have to be done, we're getting ready to do this. And so this project was, we were looking to add. Pedestrian access down to a school park, so that's wrapped around the corner and down to the top of fair road. And then the expanded lighting, so I said, can you break that out, so from the initial, which these are not public documents, but I can seal them. Because we can't have honest destruction, but so, uh, the price estimates are just what they are. When you look at how they were breaking out the cost estimates, from a layman's perspective, I'm adding up lighting to eight hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. However, some of that is your regular street lighting expense that you're gonna have to pay for anyway. That would be a part of that project because they're moving poles, there's. And then your fair road extension, when I had the followers in, did not know, um, but he did break that out for me. Um, after the fact and I don't know why that's. Uh, not right here, oh, that was a ballpark, two hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry. For what they buy would cost us to get down to.
Premium on asphalt? Compared, we weren't paying anything close to that, we were.
No, no, but I don't, it's right, this is all hand placed stuff, so. You never know, but this is, you know, an engineer like we use for the airport, the cost is out, it's got federal money behind it. And then it's got state money behind it. This is safe pathways to school, so it's connecting multiple places.
Right.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I, so I asked him to break that out for me, they put, you know, the price tag of. Say four hundred and sixty thousand would be the price for the lighting. Down from the eight forty nine, that's what they kind of estimated would be the whole part for decorative lighting. At four sixty, so we would be responsible for twenty percent of that, four sixty. And then the two hundred thousand is that extension to the park, so we'll be responsible. So this, on the unit pricing. It's like one is seventy dollars, that like a yard or fifty yards?
On the reset.
Yeah, 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 so I don't know what the, of the reset curve type one, so that's brain. So that's just the cost of what they're charging us to reset the curve in, I would assume it's linear foot, so I don't know what C is, but.
Kind of like action are you looking for?
Well, I am looking for consensus. We originally were looking at paying out, what, what was our original? I was budgeting a quarter million dollars that could come from Tiff.
Right, right.
More than that could come from Tiff. Uh, at this point in time, is do we move forward, plan to pull a quarter million dollars from Tiff? And we take the balance out of. Like roads? Or do we have to put that into a separate article next year, but these guys need guidance now, so we kind of have to get. General philosophy, the, the policy of the board as to how you want to handle this moving forward, so I look back and then you're paying and saying, this is our board's intention.
I mean, I don't like the price tag, but I, I think the items that are being done, the extension down to the park. Are non, they, they have to be done, I, I mean, we've needed the extension to the park forever, it's dangerous and I. Yeah, the decorative lighting is the only thing that you could take away or say that we are being. Excessive, right, um. But what, what's, there was two decorative one and a non decorative one. I can't imagine that is that much.
Well, no, the decorative is the street lamp on the shoulder, right, that's got a lane, a, a, a post. It's got the flag holder, it's got the wreath holder, and they would be uniform the whole app. And then there's space appropriately in terms of crossing and, and grinding, they don't all get analytics around that. Um, so there's that, as opposed to the arms that go low.
Well, right, right.
Are, are part of the split price and the lighting price, that not the breakout, but the eight hundred and forty nine. That includes the arms over across lots and things like that, right, we have to have those things.
Right, so that I don't, there's no real savings to us by, I mean, maybe a little bit, going to the less decorative.
So they've equated, if you remove the decorative lights, say we just define the non moving any decorative lights.
But that, that, that just dumps them completely, so they don't even have lights.
Right, right, so that's an estimated four hundred and sixty thousand project cost. And if you say we're gonna cut the expense of going to the school partners, two hundred. Thousand in project of us, so if you add that up and you take the point of percent, the cost of the town for the lights from one end of Main Street to the other. And the extension to the school park is a hundred and thirty two thousand.
Right, so how do you not, right, when you coin it like that, how do you not do that?
That's why I asked them to blow, this to me is the nice to ask, the extension to Fair Road and the decorative lighting.
Yes.
Yeah, that's how I knew it. And when I thought saw this eight hundred number, I'm like, hmm, but then they have to review all of that stuff coming through anyway. Our original was. We've already swapped out, you know, posts, posts and fixtures. To bring it into.
Let me ask you this, is, is the way I think, we're gonna do all this work. Is there anything going on down the road that's on the other side, I, these go off ways that we're gonna destroy them, like. For example, the project down, uh. With the sign and all, you know, all that stuff, like, is there any more of that type of work being done?
So not to the rest of my dollars, what is happening is there's water main replacement depot street uphill. That's happening this summer, we've already pushed off this intersection over here.
Right.
Got pushed off because of the sidewalk project. And you've got Main Street did not get rehilled and paved this summer because of that. They said holding on all of this stuff so that they don't, they don't come in after the fact.
Right, because that's, that was my big concern, is you spend all this money making things look pretty, not just. Destroying it, doing other stuff that we are new.
So the other thing you brought up was about the cost of granite curbing, you might as well just do it all because it's, you know, long lasting. It's over three to one in terms of price per linear foot, so they're telling me that it's about ninety dollars a linear foot for granite curbing. And that they, they can get asked, uh, concrete curbing for fifteen to twenty dollars. So they said that wasn't, they were not willing to even consider that.
I think with either problem, uh, the plows get it. This all ever really does, you know what I mean, see, even our granite ones, really, I, with what we have has taken a beating. Uh, several of our granite pieces have actually been torn out and I don't even know if they ever went back in, uh. So, I mean, I do, I do like the look of granite, it's, it's very nice, uh.
Or we can replace a few times.
Yes, yes, and I, right, awesome, so I have no, no opposed to it being concrete, I, I don't mind the savings there and.
The only, the only thing with concrete is it moves at all breaks.
Yeah.
That's, that's the only reason. Uh, granite rock can keep out of the ground and it's.
It's usually what starts, right, they start even in the pocket, it rips it out of this. So, yeah. Difference in cost, I'm comfortable, I would have found granite.
Eventually, the rework with concrete, I think you can find. Can be a lot more often, you know, you might see in five years. Kind of like cracking, you might have to dig up the curving and put new curving in. I don't know, it's really. How well you crack the ground before, you know what I'm saying, concretes, we, I mean, you can lay a pad down and it will last forever. Lay a pad down in two years, it could be all cracked at high edge, you know, it's. I've never done any kind of concrete curving, so I'm, I'm talking.
No, no, and I don't. Was an asphalt curb not an option, I mean, I know we have quite a few stretches that are all asphalt curving, I know, it's. Do they just not like, I, I don't, I mean, I don't, I'm just wondering.
I don't know, I think it's because they tend to crack. They are resetting of quite a bit of the granite curving and they will replace some of the granite curving, they don't expect this to be a standard part of the area. And that's including the price.
Well, I'm comfortable with it moving ahead as far as what part you want to pull funding from, uh. Whatever you feel is the most efficient.
We're not committing to that today, right, committing to the fact that you would authorize me to move ahead with a project plan, both by the, by the state of the D O T. And then we would assess that, whether it's through the funds that exist or through town meeting or.
Right, I, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable, I, I.
Obviously looked at because the bill isn't. I don't know what you even forward with, we have to see where it goes and then figure out a whole new thing, but.
Motion and second, any further discussion, seeing none, all was okay, it's everybody.
There's an action on unlikable personal property taxes, I have, uh, personal property tax twenty eighteen and nineteen, the total amount of fees. Five dollars eighty nine cents a unit to the main quadgerade and candy that there's no longer at our locations, no longer a legal entity. And therefore I wouldn't have no recourse to take them to small claims and nothing to attach, so my recommendation is tax collectors to write this off.
Eighty five bucks? Motion and a second, uh, any further discussions, seeing none, all in favor, it's everybody. Uh, other business, does the board have anything?
Richard, I might just have a motion to add discussion action on release of tax required property. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, it's everybody. This is one of those tax required properties, Gregory P. Subar, Barbara L. Subar, one thirty two, Scourge Road map, twenty lot forty four. Motion assigned quickly, indeed, releasing the town's tax required.
Uh, motion and a second, uh, any further discussion?
They came in and they pay all that taxes and it'll loan the minutes, that's the part of the property was taken and then it was. Given back to them for back taxes.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, everybody? Uh, anything else?
Uh, motion to add discussion action on letter recognition. Uh, motion to add discussion action on letter of recognition.
Uh, yes, yes, sir. Uh, motion in a second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Everybody, uh, so Joe Corrier, who, uh, moved town here in the last half a dozen years. Uh, was a benefactor of the town's community free access on that, it's the month of donation. He passed away last week. His service is on, yeah, everybody uses black. Oh, no, not. Okay, and I'll send you a pen. Uh, he passed away last week, his service on Friday, so I was taking the day off, I'm going to that on behalf of the town. I had drafted a letter, which is in front of your book, and I would appreciate if you could. Make the motion to sign the letter, working mission into votes to advance.
It's a motion in a second, any further discussion? I wish I had better penmanship. Seeing none, all in favor? That's everybody.
He said you have to use that.
Uh, anything else for other business?
Yes, if I can get a motion to add discussion act on. Electric line privatization to the agenda.
Last thing. Now, someone make it in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It's everybody. So a lot of other business.
Uh, this came from Central Power Company on the March River project. We have underground utility that's going to the, from the road down to the maintenance building. That conduit, we can be responsible for, uh, in which case we would then have to grant these the, uh, the power company from that over there. Or we can turn over all the liability and maintenance responsibility for that line to the power company. But not without the tax, the C I A C, for which I don't know what that stands for, uh, tax. Uh, which is fifteen percent of the private line invoice, which is our sixth change order. If you remember that, six came in, it was a bill for six thousand two twenty one eighty. So if we wanna maintain this line. Uh, ourselves from the road to the building and great, I just need you to operate, be the sign and ease it. If you don't, then we need to plan to pay nine hundred and thirty three dollars and twenty seven cents in this tax. For the power company, they're irresponsible to the maintenance of the line.
Which I.
One time fee?
So one time fee, that's right, no, and I, I. Turn that over to C M.
One electrician that went there and fixed it one time.
It's not a grab. Right, so, yeah, right, all day long, yeah, yeah, so I would take a motion to improve this.
Do you approve the expense of the nine hundred dollars?
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's everybody. Uh, did you happen to get an update on when doors or? You did, okay. Uh, right, so I would take the. And the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It's everybody.